Call this meeting to order.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community, with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray.
I'm very happy to offer the invocation tonight. If Councilmember Abraham would afterwards then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful that we are gathered together today in this wonderful city, in this wonderful country, and with all the blessings we enjoy. We're grateful we're able to gather together as residents, to be able to deliberate on the business of this city. And on behalf of the residents, we are grateful for our families, for the beautiful community which you live, and for all those who serve us, not only abroad in the armed services, but here in the public safety roles. And we are deeply thankful for their sacrifice and their care for us. We ask Thy blessings upon us all, upon all the residents, that they will be, continue to be healthy, that they will be able to have the peace that they require, and that together we'll all be able to manage the city. And we ask, Father, Thy blessing upon this meeting day, that we'll be able to have Thy Spirit with us, that we'll make the proper decisions and be able to do what that have us do. And we say it in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Doncheck? Councilmember Schwartz? Councilmember Ward? Mayor Potem Ham? Mayor Brown? First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
Mayor, there was litigation to report. Should I do that first? Okay, yeah, just want to announce that the city had brought a motion to have venue for its case against TCA heard in Riverside. And TCA had opposed that motion and wanted the case heard in San Diego, as if it were part of the older case that was litigated over several years down there, in the case that was settled. Judges in Orange County and Riverside County had concluded that this case should be heard in Riverside County. And last week, the court in San Diego agreed with that determination. So as we requested, this case, including related cases, the one brought by the school district, will be heard in Riverside County, as we'd hoped. And pretrial motions in that case are set to be heard beginning at the end of this month and continuing through the beginning of July. So we'll keep you updated on those.
Thank you, Scott. Riverside's lovely this time of year.
First item on the agenda is a report from the Beaches Parks and Recreation Department concerning the 2018 Wall of Recognition Honoree.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Samantha Thomas, Recreation Manager. It's with great pleasure and honor I come to you tonight with a recommendation to approve Lou Lido as our new Wall of Recognition Honoree. He's an outstanding citizen. Many of you know him. He has brought a huge team of people with him tonight who have nominated him, supported him. He is a volunteer with our Casa Romantica, as well as he's an RSVP also, and he does many other things in town. He's a volunteer at the high school, very involved. Citizen, really a remarkable person, who is certainly the epitome of what we choose for the Wall of Recognition. We do have a number of former recognition as well here tonight. If you want to stand up, so we can... This is our... As you know, this happens annually. We do call out to our public and our community to submit nominations, and Lou was at the top of that list this year. So without further ado, I would like to recommend that the council adopt and approve Lou as our new honoree.
I'll make that motion.
Wonderful. Second. Motion by Ward, second by Schwartz. All those in favor? Aye. Pass is five zero. Congratulations, Lou. Come on up.
I know, I know. Look at that.
Lou, this is a distinct pleasure to be able to present this certificate of recognition to you. It's funny, because some of the people who stood when that announcement was made are some of my favorite people. So you enter a pantheon of favorite people, for sure. I would read this plaque, but it was covered at length here. I had the opportunity for Lou to offer a tour of the Casa Romantica, just been a month ago or so. And I've known Lou for a very long time. It's been going on 10 years now. And one of the things that struck me during that tour was how deeply passionate he was about what he was doing there. And it's funny, because he's deeply passionate about everything he does. And it shows here, with all the different things he's done for our community. The one thing I'm grateful for is Lou is deeply passionate about San Clemente, and about making our town the best it possibly can be. So I want to give you this wonderful plaque. It does end with the following. It says, "Lou is a role model who is generous with his time, and continues to make our community a better and safer place for us all." And I agree with that 100 percent. Thank you, Lou.
Speech, speech, speech!
I promise I'll be brief. First, thank you to everyone. This award for volunteerism is an award that is shared by all the volunteers in the community. I read an interesting statistic that said if every citizen volunteered five hours a week, then it would be the equivalent of 20 million people volunteering full-time. And I think we need to remember that, that it's important, not just for the award, and I'm grateful for that, for the nominating committee, for Casa Romantica, for RSVP, the high school, and all of Beaches Parks and Recreation, and friends of Beaches Parks and Rec, Cabrillo, and all the other places that I volunteer. It's important to remember that we all do this because we're passionate about San Clemente. So, and thank you to my wife for allowing me all that free time, and for everyone else who supports all of what we do in San Clemente. That's, we all try to make it a place that we can be safe for us to live, work, and play. And I'll just keep it up.
Thank you. I don't want to take away from anything that Lou's done through his illustrious career as a volunteer in the city of San Clemente, but I just want to remind everybody that everybody is available to put in for this prestigious award. And every year, we have so many great people, but we could always use more. So if you know someone who's doing a lot of good work out there for the city of San Clemente, go on our city website, type in "Wall of Recognition," and please submit an application, because it truly is worthwhile to recognize these people for all the work they do. So, thank you, Lou.
Next is the presentation of certificates of recognition to deputies Joe Bull and Jeremiah Prescott, in recognition of their promotions to the rank of sergeant.
Call this meeting to order.
The City of San Clemente respects the many people of different faiths who reside here. The City Council historically begins its session with an invocation offered by one of the religious leaders of our community with full appreciation of our shared belief that we are one nation under God. And while the city cannot endorse any particular religion, we respect the religious freedom and freedom of expression of all our citizens to pray as they feel led to pray.
I'm very happy to offer the invocation tonight. If Councilmember Ham would afterwards then lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful that we are gathered together today in this wonderful city, in this wonderful country, and with all the blessings we enjoy. We're grateful we're able to gather together as residents, to be able to deliberate on the business of this city. And on behalf of the residents, we are grateful for our families, for the beautiful community which you live, and for all those who serve us, not only abroad in the armed services, but here in the public safety roles. And we are deeply thankful for their sacrifice and their care for us. We ask Thy blessings upon us all, upon all the residents, that they will be, continue to be healthy, that they will be able to have the peace that they require, and that together we'll all be able to manage the city. And we ask, Father, Thy blessing upon this meeting day, that we'll be able to have Thy Spirit with us, that we'll make the proper decisions and be able to do what that have us do. And we say it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Mayor Potem Ham.
Here.
Mayor Brown.
Here.
First item on the agenda is a toll road update.
Mayor, there was litigation to report. Should I do that first?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, just want to announce that the city had brought a motion to have venue for its case against TCA heard in Riverside. And TCA had opposed that motion and wanted the case heard in San Diego, as if it were part of the older case that was litigated over several years down there, and the case that was settled. Judges in Orange County and Riverside County had concluded that this case should be heard in Riverside County. And last week, the court in San Diego agreed with that determination. So as we'd requested, this case, including related cases, the one brought by the school district, will be heard in Riverside County, as we'd hoped. And pretrial motions in that case are set to be heard beginning at the end of this month and continuing through the beginning of July. So we'll keep you updated on those.
Thank you, Scott. Riverside's lovely this time of year.
First item on the agenda is a report from the Beaches Parks and Recreation Department concerning the 2018 Wall of Recognition Honoree.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Samantha Thomas, Recreation Manager. It's with great pleasure and honor I come to you tonight with a recommendation to approve Lou Lido as our new Wall of Recognition Honoree. He's an outstanding citizen. Many of you know him. He has brought a huge team of people with him tonight who have nominated him, supported him. He is a volunteer with our Casa Romantica, as well as he's an RSVP also, and he does many other things in town. He's a volunteer at the high school, very involved. Citizen, really a remarkable person, who is certainly the epitome of what we choose for the Wall of Recognition. We do have a number of former recognitiones as well here tonight. If you want to stand up, so we can... This is our... As you know, this happens annually. We do call out to our public and our community to submit nominations, and Lou was at the top of that list this year. So without further ado, I would like to recommend that the council adopt and approve Lou as our new honoree.
I'll make that motion.
Wonderful. Second. Motion by Ward, second by Schwartz. All those in favor? Aye. Pass is five zero. Congratulations. Lou, come on up. Lou, this is a distinct pleasure to be able to present this certificate of recognition to you. It's funny, because some of the people who stood when that announcement was made are some of my favorite people. So you enter a pantheon of favorite people, for sure. I would read this plaque, but it was covered at length here. I had the opportunity for Lou to offer a tour of the Casa Romantica, just been a month ago or so. And I've known Lou for a very long time. It's been going on 10 years now. And one of the things that struck me during that tour was how deeply passionate he was about what he was doing there. And it's funny, because he's deeply passionate about everything he does. And it shows here, with all the different things he's done for our community. The one thing I'm grateful for is Lou is deeply passionate about San Clemente and about making our town the best it possibly can be. So I want to give you this wonderful plaque. It does end with the following. It says, "Lou is a role model who is generous with his time and continues to make our community a better and safer place for us all." And I agree with that 100%. Thank you, Lou.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promise I'll be brief. First, thank you to everyone. This award for volunteerism is an award that is shared by all the volunteers in the community. I read an interesting statistic that said if every citizen volunteered five hours a week, then it would be the equivalent of 20 million people volunteering full-time. And I think we need to remember that, that it's important, not just for the award, and I'm grateful for that, for the nominating committee, for Casa Romantica, for RSVP, the high school, and all of Beaches Parks and Recreation, and Friends of Beaches Parks and Rec, Cabrillo, and all the other places that I volunteer. It's important to remember that we all do this because we're passionate about San Clemente. So, and thank you to my wife for allowing me all that free time. And for everyone else who supports all of what we do in San Clemente. We all try to make it a place that we can, be safe for us to live, work, and play. And I'll just keep it up.
Thank you.
I don't want to take away from anything that Lou's done through his illustrious career as a volunteer in the city of San Clemente, but I just want to remind everybody that everybody is available to put in for this prestigious award. And every year, we have so many great people, but we could always use more. So if you know someone who's doing a lot of good work out there for the city of San Clemente, go on our city website, type in "Wall of Recognition," and please submit an application, because it truly is worthwhile to recognize these people for all the work they do. So thank you, Lou.
Yeah, very cool. Next is Presentation of Certificates of Recognition to Deputies Joe Bull and Jeremiah Prescott, in recognition of their promotions to the rank of Sergeant.
I was deeply disappointed, because I thought you'd have the stash back. No mustache anymore, no facial hair for us all here. So I invited Chris down to help out, because this is something where you guys are very threatening. And so, you know, a little backup in case stuff goes down, you know? Throw Chris into the mix. That didn't make the microphone, did it? You know what? This is, you know, this is the day, actually, that I'm happy for you guys, I'm sad for San Clemente. You know, because I think a part of what is exceptional here is the good work that both of you have done for our community. So, Joe, here's, of course, your recognition and plaque. So Joe's read, it says, "In recognition of his promotion to Deputy Sheriff from the rank of Sergeant effective March 16th, and expressing San Clemente's appreciation and gratitude for his long-term exemplary service to the city of San Clemente." Now, frankly, we could write about six books on both of these gentlemen, about everything they've done for our town. But as a smallest possible token of our gratitude, we want to thank you for all the good service you've done for us. You know, from not only policing, but just the positive efforts and everything for everything you've done. And so, it's also a little bittersweet, Jeremiah, as well, because you got promoted. It looks like, actually, he's your senior by 12 days. You know, he's a little more seniority. I said March 30th, I believe, right? You know, so...
It's the other way around.
No, is it? Oh, no!
It's okay, that's not him.
You shouldn't use that over him somehow, you know? Okay.
Oh, he does.
Anyway, gentlemen, we're deeply grateful for your service to our community. We thank you for coming out here. We'd love, if you wouldn't mind, us... Oh, yeah, of course.
Hey, guys, I just got a form of the community about such a great job that you guys do. And Tim wasn't joking when he said it's going to be a tremendous loss for this community, seeing you guys promoted on. So first off, congratulations. But I want to tell two stories about these guys. Most of you probably don't know that Sergeant Bull is our homeless liaison officer, and he's doing more on the front lines than probably any other deputy is doing, as far as the homeless front goes. And so I would just like to take opportunity to congratulate you on your promotion and give you a round of applause for all the work you've done for the citizens of San Clemente. And then Sergeant Prescott here did a little tour as an undercover last year.
Roughly.
Roughly. And I wasn't able to get a photo of it, but...
Hopefully.
About a year and a half ago, I'm on a medical aid call down at Antoine's, and this homeless-looking fellow comes over, and he decides that he's going to stand about this close to my face. And he smells about as good as you can imagine, and he looks about as good as you can imagine. And I just sat there, and I took it for a little bit, and then he comes over and he whispers in my ear and says something. And I thought, what is this guy doing? And he goes over and talks to the next fireman, says the same thing, and then the same thing, and the same thing. And it wasn't until I talked to the captain that I realized, this is one of our undercover officers, Mr. Prescott. So he has done so much good work for this community, I just want to congratulate him as well. So thank you, guys, for both your hard work. Thank you, everybody.
I just want to add to the fact that, when, you guys don't realize it from the community's standpoint, but this is a very small group of deputies that is very family-oriented. And when two senior members of the family moves on, there's a loss, no matter what there is in experience and capabilities. And so losing these guys within the family was a huge loss for us, exactly what the mayor said. And the funny part about it is, is they're both born and raised San Clementeans. So it's one of those things that, one of them still lives here, and it's, they're a part of this community, and believe it or not, they want to stay a part of the community, and however I can put them to work in their ancillary duties. So I just hope, we made a big loss, they have some big shoes to step into, some of our newer deputies, and they're going to do their best to do it. But thank you for your service, gentlemen. I will miss you.
You've got to show it off.
Thanks.
You guys want to say anything?
Okay. I want to say thank you very much, and the last 11 years in San Clemente has been the absolute highlight of my career, the relationships I've made here, and all the friends. I'll never forget, and it'll always be home. So thank you very much.
You know, working in San Clemente was, when you worked the jails, and they asked you, hey, what city do you want to work in? This was the only city that I put down on the list. And then I came down and talked to the chief at the time, who was Dioria, pitched my, you know, just made my pitch, and said, this is where I want to go. And I thank God every day, literally, that I got sent down to San Clemente. It's the best 10 years that I've had in patrol. And when the chief was talking about how this is a really small community of deputies and a family, it really is. And you guys get a level of policing that I think a lot of cities nationwide, quite frankly, don't get, because every single deputy here cares about the city and polices the city as if it's their own, because it is their own. And that's, if there's one thing I want to leave you guys with, it would be that. You know, between the two of us, it's been 21 years here in San Clemente, and we've loved every minute of it. And leaving for both of us was incredibly difficult, but we both hope to be able to come down here as patrol sergeants and continue to contribute. Also, if you don't know, I am one of the contributors to the San Clemente social media page, the Facebook and the Instagram. And so with Joe, I want to take a selfie with all of you guys in the background, and we're going to post it up on our social media today. You guys good with that?
Yes.
All right.
They're not all smiling yet. One, two, three.
Next is Presentation of a Proclamation to Rod Malott, Marine Safety Lieutenant, proclaiming the week from May 21st through May 28th as National Beach Safety Week.
It's good to see you here today. This is a, we have the opportunity to present this every year. I'd love for you to tell us a little bit about all of the events we have going on here, because you're probably intimately familiar with it. It does say that we've got the proclaim May 21st through May 28th as National Beach Safety Week. And it's an opportunity for all of the residents and visitors alike to remember, to learn to swim, swim near lifeguards, swim with a buddy, check with the lifeguards, use sunscreen, drink water, obey posted signs and flags, keep the beach... Man, I sound like I'm talking to my kids here. This is amazing. Keep the beach and water clean, rip current safety, enter the water feet first, and wear a life jacket. And this is all great stuff to remember, and obviously for residents, something deeply important. Want to chat a little bit about it for us?
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council. National Beach Safety Week is designed to promote awareness of the dangers of the ocean. The ocean is a very exciting and fun place to visit, but it also comes with the dangerous aspects. As lifeguards, our primary goal is to make sure that everyone has a safe and enjoyable day. The way we succeed in that is public education is a key component for lifeguard operations, and National Beach Safety Week is an excellent avenue for us to spread the message about the dangers and how to stay safe at the beach. Last year, lifeguards rescued 14, over 1,400 people from the ocean, and roughly 90% of those rescued were from rip currents. I want to introduce you to our junior lifeguard coordinator and public education coordinator. His name is Taylor Mellinger. He is going to provide you some safety tips and some opportunities that are coming up this summer for you to learn more about beach safety. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, City Council. Well, the mayor kind of already did my job by reading those off. So I'm going to give you guys five quick safety tips for the summer, as we're going into it. So number one, learn to swim. Number two, check with the lifeguards. Number three, swim near a lifeguard. Number four, swim with a buddy. And number five, learn rip current safety. And one last tip is for the kids, join a junior lifeguard program. For opportunities to learn more about ocean safety and meet our current ocean lifeguard staff for this summer, you can visit our open house event on Saturday, May 28th, from 9:00 to 12:00. And we also have ocean safety clinics this summer that are on the following Saturdays, June 16th, June 30th, July 14th, and July 28th. And those are from 11:00 to 12:00. And have a great and fun summer. And lastly, you will be hearing from OCFA shortly about drowning prevention, and it's great to see public agencies working together to prevent drowning. Thank you.
Next is Presentation of a Proclamation to Beth Apadaka, interim site director of the Dorothy Visser Senior Center, proclaiming the month of May 2018 as Older Americans' Month.
You should just stay here for a while.
I should. I keep going back through the papers, they're up there. I don't, I guess I could bring them with me, but that would be farsighted. Tell us a little bit about what's going on in Older Americans' Month.
Older Americans' Month was a great opportunity where all the focus goes on the seniors and everything in the area, and just trying to really emphasize that they're out there, there's a need for them. We have a ton of active seniors, but we also have a lot of seniors in need. And so this is an opportunity for people just to be more aware of those that need the Meals on Wheels, need the non-medical emergency transportation, but at the same time, kind of recognizing the hundreds and hundreds of volunteers we have that provide these services to seniors. So that's what Older Americans' Month, just making more aware.
And we have this proclamation that declares the month of May is Older Americans' Month, and it urges every resident to take time during this month to recognize older adults and people who serve them as vital parts of the community. Great advice. We wish you well during this month, and thanks for all your good service.
And as the older American up here, thank you very much for being.
All right, okay. There you go. Presentation of a Proclamation to Wayne Greenleaf, San Clemente veterans of foreign wars post 7142, proclaiming May 26th and May 27th as Buddy Poppy Days.
Wonderful to see you. This is one of my favorite proclamations in the year, an opportunity to remember. And so if maybe you could tell us a little bit about Buddy Poppy Days, and about what you're looking to do during this important time, and we'd be happy to support you.
Thank you very much. Our members of the VFW are gratified by this proclamation. All of our income goes to the veterans who fought in World War II, and Korea, and Vietnam, and the Gulf, and Iraq, and Afghanistan. We will be distributing poppies at Albertson's and Ralph's and St. Peter Brothers during the weekend of Memorial Day, in memory of those who did not come back. We will continue to support our veterans, giving thanks in some small way for all they've done for us. Thank you.
So this is, there's a remarkable history behind this day. And it was established by government allegiance in 1922, and is exclusively for the benefit of disabled and needy veterans, and the widows and orphans of deceased veterans. Whereas the basic purpose of the distribution of Buddy Poppies by the VFW is eloquent reflected in the desire to honor the dead by helping the living, therefore I proclaim, May 26th and 27th, 2018, is Buddy Poppy Days, and urge citizens to recognize the merits of this cause by contributing generously to its support through the gift of Buddy Poppies, and encourage all patriotic citizens to wear a Buddy Poppy, to evidence their gratitude to the men and women who have risked and lost their lives in defense of the freedom which we continue to joy, enjoy as American citizens. Thank you, sir, for being here today about this.
Thank you, Mayor.
And we want to give the council the opportunity to kick in, if we could.
To take a poppy.
Yeah, let's...
And if there's an opening of wallets, that would be super as well.
Yeah, oh yeah, right at the top.
Of course.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but the poppies date back to the, there was a poem about it in World War I. Flanders Field was the poppy, and that was what it was established from. Is that right?
It's as big or bigger in Europe than here in the United States.
Yes, yeah. The Great War. It's a celebration of it. Wonderful.
Make sure you get a poppy there. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Shiloh. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
And next is a presentation by the San Clemente High School Youth Coalition.
I don't think this one is going to...
I don't think I can present. Okay, you guys got it.
Mayor Brown, councilmembers, city administration, thank you for letting us present to you guys tonight. My name is Helen Calderon. I'm a senior at San Clemente High School, and I'm president of SC Shift. And I'd like to present to you some of the members.
I'm Samantha, and I'm the vice president.
I'm Kyle Stevens, and I'm publicity. I'm also a junior at San Clemente.
I'm, oh, I'm too short. Sorry. I'm Abby Ambock. I'm just a member of SC Shift, and I am in 12th grade.
So at San Clemente High School, we're a campus club, and we're supported by the Wellness and Prevention Center, advocating for a healthy community. Our mission is to empower youth to make healthier decisions and live productive, alcohol- and drug-free lives. We do this because we want to be a positive influence to our peers, and we feel like if they hear advice coming from us, they'll probably take it more likely than hearing it from adults. And we want to prove to them that they don't have to be drinking or doing drugs to have fun. And our focus this year was to reduce alcohol amongst our peers.
Part of the reason why we're doing this is because by 11th grade, 53% of the students have tried alcohol. 35% of the students have tried at least one drink in the past 30 days. 22% of them have been drinking in the last 30 days as well. In our city, we have 151 liquor licenses. 39 of those are off-sale licenses, and we conducted an environmental scan at 32 of those establishments.
The Wellness and Prevention Center staff at San Clemente High School gathered a group of leaders to do an environmental scan. The staff trained these leaders to look for certain things. A few of these things the youth leaders were trained to look for were compliance with regulation and standards of the law, proper posting of license and signage, advertising in windows, location if it's near a youth or teen center, security cameras in store to track where the alcohol is, location of alcohol in stores, and many more. What we did find in the scan, well, what we found was 75% of establishments engaged in practices that reduce youth alcohol, youth access to alcohol. Nine establishments were reported to be easier for youth to access alcohol. Eight establishments were out of the compliance of proper signage, including a liquor license, laundering signs, and even WID signs. 11 of these establishments had more than 33% of their windows covered in ads or stickers, which is against the law in California.
Establishments that received the lowest ratings, we noticed, were either located near schools, did not have proper signage, were not attentive to patrons, which means that they were on their phones and not... that they were on their phones and not paying attention to teens or adults that came into the store. They had alcohol by candy and other easily accessible places, which leads to teens, which leads to an increase in stealing by teens. And we suggest that, we encourage establishments to be trained in responsible beverage service, and we want to recognize retailers who follow regulations, because this can lead to an increase in business in their establishment, which can lead to other businesses wanting to follow in their footsteps. And we ask to reduce signs and window coverings. We noticed that a lot of the liquor stores had a lot of stickers and signs that were covering up the inside of their stores, so we want to reduce that. And we want to encourage support programs for teens to educate them about drugs and alcohol. Any questions?
Yeah, I got a question for you. First off, great work.
Thank you.
Thanks for doing that. Have you guys reached out to Chief Peters? He's our chief of police in the back there, because a lot of the information would probably be great for him to get access to.
Have we?
You guys already did that? Not yet?
Well, we will.
Well, I'm sure he's gonna be willing to give you a card as soon as you walk out, so if you guys wouldn't mind stopping on your way out and talking to him, and keep the good work, and we hope to hear from you guys again soon.
I have a question also. There's so many things a municipality can do, but a lot of the issues you're talking about are state or county level. Have you done outreach to like ABC, or, which is the training arm for alcohol, or any of the other organizations? This is very impressive that you did this. And as we have found as councilpeople, there usually are about 10% that are bad actors, and it sounds like in this situation, that's the case. Anyway, I would encourage you to reach out beyond council.
That's at length, they don't know. So we do, ABC comes to our adult coalition, and they can't always come there, because they have sports, homework, all that.
Oh, they have lives?
Yeah. Some of them have stayed in ABC presentation, and we have had children taps this year in San Clemente.
Okay, yeah. But that was very eye-opening. Thank you.
And as part of the suggestions, for example, some of the things is encouraging establishments, things that necessarily aren't lawful but are responsible, because not everything that was said was necessarily against the law as much as there's a best practice. Have you contacted the establishments themselves to inform them of your findings, or is it mainly going to be through the city you're looking for that to happen?
Through the city. I think it's a combination of both.
Yeah. It's more of both, because like, when we go to the establishments, it just like...
Come on up to the microphone.
When we go to like establishments, you might not get the manager who like fully will understand what you're going through and like what we're trying to achieve, while when you go into the city, it would be super helpful, because then you could talk to all of them at once.
Okay.
Like, you're not gonna be busy with graduation and those kinds of things. I would be really curious on a population basis, I think you said we have 153 liquor licenses? Was that on your first slide?
151.
151. On a per capita basis, how we compare to other cities?
We are way higher.
We are high. That analysis exists? Okay. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you coming out. Good work.
Thank you.
Next is presentation to Rob Capobianco, OCFA Division Chief, proclaiming the city's participation in the Always Watch Your Child Around Water and Never Swim Alone 2018 campaigns.
Boy, we just have a never-ending stream of good people coming up here today. We appreciate you coming out here, Chief. We really appreciate you being here. Now, I've got a lot of wherayses here, and instead of me reading these, I'd love for maybe you to chat about some of the things that you're looking to do, get accomplished in these campaigns, and what we've got going on. This is, one of the great things about being close to the water is, is we have a lot of our residents and their children that grew up around it, are used to it, but it also means that we're not as vigilant as we used to, because we've been around it so much. And so, love to hear some more about what these campaigns are, and how we can outreach the residents. So I'll turn over to you.
Mayor Brown, members of the council, I appreciate your support on this. It means a lot to me, and I'll give you a couple of reasons. Number one, it's completely preventable. In Orange County, we had 101 drownings that we responded to last year. I can tell you that the city of San Clemente had zero. There were 45 fatalities of those 101 incidents that we went to. There were only four cities in Orange County that could say they didn't have any. San Clemente is one of those four. And not only that, it's one of the only coastal cities. So if you look at the amount of water, the amount of people in the water, it's pretty impressive. And it's too bad the lifeguards aren't here anymore, because I think it has a lot to do with them. All the other coastal cities had incidents, drownings, and fatalities last year. What I'd like to do is figure out how to do that again. The reason why it means so much to me is I was an ocean lifeguard for 18 years. I pulled hundreds of people out of the water, I was responsible for watching the water, and I can tell you, I never lost one. That being said, I like everybody in this audience, and TV could honestly say it'll never happen to me. I had a one-year-old boy, still do, it's a positive story. I have a one-year-old boy. I was in a backyard pool, right? So you let your guard down a little bit. I was in the water with him. He was on a beach entry. I was closer than I am to the mayor. Another fireman was standing at the edge of the pool, and both of our wives were standing there. It wasn't a party atmosphere, it was literally a backyard. My son wanted to get in the water. He was about one years old. I got distracted, because there were some really cool flowers next to me that I wanted to put in my yard, so I turned around like this for less than 30 seconds. In that time, I turned around, my son was silently laying on the bottom of the pool. Not a word was said, there was no noise, there was no struggle. He wasn't struggling. I was able to pick him up, and it was like nothing ever happened to him. Put him back up there. I've been scared ever since. He's now 16 years old and a water polo player for Laguna Beach High School. So it turned out positive, but on the other hand, it could never happen to me. I'm a lifeguard, I'm a fireman, there's no way. I'm in the water with him. The biggest thing we can do is that Water Watcher program. I always thought it was kind of silly until I had that, but watch your kids in the water. That's my biggest thing that I learned from this. So once again, we have a ton of stats. Wear that Water Watcher, make sure somebody's watching your kids, and let's get another year where San Clemente having goose eggs across the board.
So the campaign runs from May through October, so we've got the entire summer, and it's wonderful for us to participate in that and create some public awareness. So thank you, Chief. Appreciate you coming out.
And next is the San Clemente High School Campus Report, including presentation of certificates of recognition to Carney Campbell and Trey Russell.
Yeah, do your reports first. I'll just hang out back there.
Okay. Hi, I'm Carney Campbell. I'm the president of Link Crew, and I brought along Owen. He'll talk a little bit about ASB afterwards. So this week for Link Crew, we're hosting our interviews for the President, Vice President, and Secretary next year, so in the coming school year, there'll be a different person speaking to you guys. I don't know who that is yet, but we'll know by the end of the week. And then after that, we're gonna have, the officials that are chosen this week will be doing interviews and applications for the committee chairs that'll be selected toward the last weeks of school. And then two weeks ago, we had our first Link Crew meeting with all of the new leaders that were just selected, so sophomore, current sophomores and juniors. And then, this isn't affiliated with Link Crew, but this week, we're having a nonpartisan voter drive at our school, and it's put on by students and run by students, and we're going to be having, so it's for 16-year-old students and up, because we're gonna have them pre-register, or if they're 18, then register to vote, so we can get a higher youth voter turnout. So, thank you.
I'm Owen Africa. I'm gonna be the ASB president for next year. I'm very excited about it. So for the high school, we have prom this Saturday at the Yoast Theater in Santa Ana. And then we've also had AP testing going on throughout the past couple of weeks, and then this week is our last week of AP testing. But other than that, we're just looking to finish out the school year with some events, senior awards, graduation, things like that, all good stuff. Yeah, looking forward to it, looking forward to next year.
So we have, Carney, a wonderful plaque for you and recognition. So what's your plans after graduation?
I'm going to be going to American University in DC.
That's great. Congratulations. Wonderful. You'll probably improve things a lot around there, so we're glad to give you this. Congratulations for all you've done for us, and here's a certificate of recognition for you.
Thank you.
And we think you've got great things ahead of you, so congratulations for that. And Trey is...
I'll change the name.
Could you, could you put you on it? There you go. All yours, if you wouldn't mind handing it over to him. And Tom would love to recognize him if he has the time. If not, we wish him well as well. Great. Thank you, Carney. I appreciate it, absolutely.
Members of the audience who wish to address council on matters that are within the jurisdiction of the city of San Clemente but not separately listed on the agenda, may do so during the oral communications portion of the meeting. A total time limitation of 30 minutes is allocated for oral communications, Part One, with each speaker being allotted three minutes, which gives his or her presentation. We do have some cards.
We will start with Stephanie Quinn. Sehch Quinn. Following Stephanie is Marty Benson.
I'm Stephanie Sehch Quinn with the Surf Rider Foundation here in San Clemente. I'm here to talk about your IBI arterial and mobility study. Surf Rider was pleased to see that the study concluded that an arterial through the park, specifically connecting La Pata to Cristianitos, would virtually have no utility. And your study concluded that roughly 250 cars per day would be using that, which is obviously not a lot. When we learned that you were studying this road, we were deeply concerned. Obviously, the Save San Onofre Coalition has spent 15 years trying to protect San Onofre from any road construction. And as you know, we fought to protect this park because it has a myriad of resources. I mean, just the recreational benefits alone are astounding, from world-class surf to backcountry hiking and biking. Of course, it's an environmental hotspot, where it's a sanctuary for 12 threatened species. And then, of course, 2.5 million people use this park, which brings millions of dollars to San Clemente a year. In fact, the CEO of Surf Rider, as part of his dissertation for his PhD, conducted a study for five years concluding that roughly surfers bring about $13 million when they come to surf at Tressles, from buying, you know, surf wax, to gas, et cetera. And of course, we fought to protect this park for the beautiful Native American sacred sites that reside in the park. So we are clearly very pleased to see that the city was not going to submit an arterial package to the OCTA that would put San Onofre in jeopardy. And then, I also just want to thank the council members who have spoken in opposition about any road through the park, whether it's an arterial or a gigantic toll road. We really appreciate that. So in sum, we're very thankful to see the results. We're thankful for those of you that see no road as a benefit through the park. And as we all know, San Onofre is San Clemente and vice versa. So again, thank you for your time, and have a great evening.
Next is Marty.
Mayor, just while the next speaker's coming up...
Of course.
Could I just correct the record?
Yes.
The city is not studying putting a road through San Onofre State Park. Nothing could be further from the truth.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. Marty Benson.
Hi. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Marty Benson. I'm here representing the Save San Onofre Coalition, and I'm also here to talk about the IBI study. We're very pleased to find that the city's study found no utility in an arterial through the park. And to echo Mr. Smith's comment, we're also very happy to see that the package that you submitted to the MPAH at OCTA excludes any arterial, and also the old green alignment toll road through the park. We're very thankful for the members of the city council who have stated opposition to a road through the park, and we're happy that it's not going to be included in that MPAH submission. What we see here is a great opportunity for the city. We would love to see a resolution or some sort of commitment from the city council to never try to build through the park in the future. I know that you can't bind future boards, but as a symbolic measure, that'd be a wonderful thing to do. Also, since the city isn't looking to build a road through the park, this gives you a great opportunity to save a bunch of taxpayer dollars by dropping the litigation that addresses and undermines, would potentially undermine the protective agreement that the Save San Onofre Coalition has achieved for the delineated avoidance area, which includes the San Onofre State Park and the Don O'Neil Land Conservancy and most of the San Mateo watershed, which is one of the last undammed and very pristine watersheds in Southern California. So, thank you for the study. We're very happy with the results of the study, and we would love to see some movement in further protections for the park, and potentially also suspending the litigation, dropping or suspending the litigation that would serve to unprotect the park. Thank you in advance for your consideration.
Thank you. Next is Paul Middleton. Following Paul is Michael Rainier. Is that right? Paul, yes, sir. Okay.
My name is Paul Middleton, and thank you for having me again. I'm here to help support and hopefully enlighten anyone here about the great good that the cannabis industry can do for the state, for the local communities. I have a company that has a medical health drink in the cannabis business, and we're currently looking at locations around San Clemente, hoping that with the good help of the city council and mayor, that hopefully y'all can find your way to, find a way to open up the cannabis industry in your community. I lost my wife six years ago to, I would've lost her to cancer, but the treatment killed her. All I can ask is everyone that is here, and especially the city council and the mayor, you can close your eyes and open your heart and think about, do you have any one person in your life, your family, your friends, that have died from cancer? If you can open your hearts, and especially your minds, to all of the science that is coming out now with the legalities of the cannabis industry around this country, and especially here in California, who has been the leader of the entire movement. Research has shown, and there are labs in this state that have over an 80% success rate in curing cancer without chemo, without radiation, without cutting out organs. And that's all I can do is ask for y'all to think about that, and especially just personally, if you have somebody in your family or within the realm of your life that has cancer, please explore the science that is currently out there and the research that is going on here in Colorado and some other states that, when they went legal, very good doctors, biochemists moved in to start the research, because they were not encumbered with laws that were gonna take them away for trying to find out what Mother Nature is giving us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Michael Rainier. Following Michael is Louise Herbert.
Members of the council, good evening. My partner, Paul, spoke before I had a chance to come up, but I just, we're offering, we're interested in a way to bring more money to the community in a legal way. Fewer than one in three California cities, 144 out of 482, allow any kind of cannabis business to operate in their borders. 18 of the states, 58 counties permit cannabis businesses in unincorporated areas. Fewer than one in five California cities even allow medical marijuana dispensaries, even though medical marijuana's been legal in California since '96. Of the 144 cities that permit marijuana businesses in their borders, 57 are levying taxes on the industry, which doesn't mean that cannabis in the 87 others is tax-free, but there's a state tax of 15%. That's largely because Prop 64 requires governments to get voter approval for their tax schemes. But cities that have approved taxes are beginning to rake in the cash. San Jose made $2.2 million in revenue in the first two months of the year, while Oakland made $2.86 million in the first quarter. The projections for the Costa Mesa area are $1.56 million over the next 365, or, you know, the 18 fiscal year. We're not exactly sure what it's going to be, but that's probably the best moniker for Orange County so far. Orange County so far, other than maybe the Santa Ana area. State law says that cities can't completely ban adults from growing plants, but all the stats are basically showing that the cities that are willing to come in, you know, that are willing to vet companies, that are going the extra distance trying to get bank accounts, trying to be legitimate companies to add tax, hard tax, harder earned taxpayer dollars to the picture. You know, that's why I'm here, and that's why we're up here. And I just want you to consider it in the future. Maybe, it's a chance to be the first coastal city to take a step further than the rest, ahead of the game, to try to make a change and say, maybe we can do this if we can do this with the right people. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Louise Herbert is next. Following Louise is Angela Conrad.
Hi, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak with you. I am Louise Herbert and a resident of San Clemente for 35 years. Last week, I did something that I've never done before. I approached the code department of your city, our city, and sent them, after speaking with Angela Boone, a photo journal of all of the political signs that have populated especially El Camino. This is a nonpartisan issue. This has to do with litter and ugliness to our city. I've always thought that San Clemente was above this, but in past years, it's never been addressed, not to the extent it has now. So what I did was I went out and photod campaign signs, just a little bit of them. Yeah, didn't have that much time, Chris. So I started at San Pablo, which is Buggy Wash, buggy whatever it's called, and from there to Palazada is 1.3 miles, and there were 98 signs. And I find this appalling. And keep in mind, I would've taken pictures of, I don't care whose sign it is, it doesn't belong there. Having bought cog signs myself as the show manager of the Anaheim Home and Garden Show and receiving a fine from the city of Anaheim for just under $7,000 one year to add to my advertising budget that was not something I wanted, I'm very familiar with the ins and outs of cogs. So I did contact the department, Angela Boone, on Wednesday. Now, I'm not here to complain, actually, as shocking as that may be. I met with Angela Boone today as well as Paul Pie, and was pleased to say that, not Sunday, but today, I noticed that many of the signs were down. Of the signs that I turned in, 140 of them, which was, again, only the mile, .3, and then a little bit on Pico by Carros and by OC Mattress across from pickup sticks, over 140 of them, that over 100 have been removed as of today. I give you really good credit for this to Angela, who understood when I sent in a photo journal of locations and addresses, that I wasn't going to leave this lightly left behind. So that is kudos. And in closing, on a nonpartisan level, the schools have been represented very well here, and I would like to say that it's imperative for Orange County, all of Orange County, that we vote for Mary Navarro, who is running to represent all of the kids here in the county. She has over 30 years of experience as a teacher, principal, and working on all levels of our school system. And this goes back to the alcohol aspect that the kids are talking about, education, representation for the kids that are going to be part of our future. And I hope that we can get behind Mary Navarro for Orange County School Board. And thank you again to the people at Codes.
Okay. Next is Angela Conrad. Following Angela is Richard Boyer.
Good evening, city council. Thank you for having me again. I'm here to talk again about, to ask you to consider putting cannabis regulation on your agenda for consideration. I am a resident of over 10 years, and I want to support my community in having safe cannabis available to its citizens. We know that it exists here in our city, but if you've seen what I've seen, it's not safe. It's not clean. It often has pesticides in it. It often has heavy metals in it. It's not regulated, and we need to support a regulated environment in order to create safety for our citizens. There are people certainly who use cannabis irresponsibly, but there's also people that use it for Parkinson's and MS. They use it for, you know, my next door neighbor uses it. She got off her addictive sleep medication. I personally was able to get off my sleep medication for over 10 years. My sweetie has PTSD. He was medicated by the VA with multiple medications to the point where I'd have to wake him up in the middle of the night just because his breathing was so depressed. That no longer exists with the use of cannabis. And we know that it is, it can be used in a safe, responsible manner. And as Michael suggested, we can use these tax dollars to support our youth in education and, you know, to educate the dangers of using opioids and vaping with additives, that kind of thing. And I know that when Councilman Schwartz was here, he made a comment about the banking. I brought it up last council meeting. You know, make that as part of the regulation. And I just had a couple of suggestions. I thought maybe I'd read some points of what other cities have used in their regulations that might be helpful in our city for consideration. And that is, you know, a cannabis business can be, you can locate it in a space where it's 600 feet away from residents, churches, schools, public libraries, youth centers, and drinking establishments. And that might, you know, make a smaller zoning area, but certainly, they've done that for other industries, you know, to keep them separate. You know, make sure that there's limited deliveries to city, by licensed delivery services. If you have, we know that there are delivery services that are delivering into this city, you know, and that can't be regulated, but you could require them to have a license to be able to deliver into the city. You could limit the hours of operation. Certainly, some, you know, if you have a pharmacy or a drinking establishment, we have certain hours that they're allowed to be open. The same thing that can happen for the cannabis industry. You can require that storage areas be monitored, making sure that any licenses are not given out to anybody that's had any kind of conviction. You know, there's multiple ways that you can regulate this industry so it is safe for the citizens, because we know it exists here. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Angela. Richard? Any other comments?
I'm going to go off topic here and add something to the pro-cannabis speakers. The human brain has cannabinoid receptors. It doesn't have alcohol receptors. There's something to think about. What I'm going to talk about, I'm the president of San Clemente Citizens for Integrity and Development, and I noticed that there is yet another new lawsuit filed on May 8th by the outlet mall, seeking everything that we, who sued the city and the real party, the outlet mall developer, got the court to order to be set aside. I have a question for the city attorney. Was any action taken on that new agenda item?
Richard, I'd probably speak to that item. He was recused from the case, and so he can't speak about it. We have a different attorney who handled that.
Will that attorney be available to speak to that issue? Or can I assume nothing was, no action was taken?
I can certainly take whatever question you have and relay it to him and get you an answer.
Okay. Well, there's something that our attorney at the time advised me to do, is every time there was some meeting like that, to ask if there was any reportable action taken and some condition to do that. And I, there's no pleasant way to put this, but I was very encouraged that council was fighting the outlet malls' attempts to get signage to which it wasn't entitled, right up through November with the, if I recall, $300,000 supplemental funding for legal expenses, which added to the funding for the cost of the lawsuit by our group and the city's defense that was unsuccessful because we prevailed in every case. That's $550,000. The, that's supplemental. The unseen costs may be twice that. We may have already invested $1 million. To see council go ahead and try to negotiate with somebody who just simply does not negotiate was really disheartening. And it may not have prevented this lawsuit from being filed if council had stood behind the substantive analysis that the planning commission performed in 2006 that said one project identification sign and possibly two anchor signs were appropriate. I'll finish by saying, I'm dismayed at the loss of our corporate or our institutional memory, and if we can find the old website, it would be very helpful to make that information available again. Thank you.
Richard, I'm sorry, just really quickly, what is it that you wanted me to ask our other attorney?
Just if there was any action taken on that item.
Action taken? Oh, the closed session item? Okay.
Reportable action taken in closed session.
I will report out to you.
I have great interest in the topic, and I would like to know if there's anything that can be reported. I think that it should be shared with the community.
Of course.
We should overshare rather than suppress it.
I will, I'll find out from our attorney.
Thank you.
Great. Okay. That's it?
Could we have a motion waiving reading in full of all?
Do you have a card to submit, sir?
Please come on up and do so. Thank you. Please hand it over here. Welcome, Jack.
Hi, my name's Jack Straw, and I'm a resident of San Clemente. I live up over, up by North Beach, over on Buena Vista, and I wanted to ask the council what their thoughts were about the North Beach concession stand. From what I understand, it was boarded up last summer, and the current vendor backed up from, and as I talked to the city on the phone about, inquiring about it, they thought the timeline would push out the new vendor to take place halfway, if not at the end of the summer. And so I was wondering if the city would consider an interim vendor that could take action quicker to provide money for the city, revenue for the city, and then concessions for the people that go to the beach, and then so also wouldn't look, just board it up for another summer.
Great. If you would mind, Eric, if you give a card for James, get in touch with Eric, and he could provide you details. He's the one who's handling much of that.
I've actually had a conversation with Mr. Straw, and so we'll continue to have that conversation, see where it goes, and if we have a proposal, we'll bring it to council.
Great. Good. Thank you. Thank you, Jack.
Okay. Could we have a motion waiving reading in full?
Motion by Ham, second by Doncheck, all those in favor. Aye. Passes 5-0.
Closed session report, city attorney?
Yeah, thanks, mayor and council. As was indicated earlier, I had a prior representation that prohibits me being with the city council on the Villa San Clemente matters, so those were handled by special counsel. If there's reportable action, they usually tell me to tell you, so I don't think there's any will confirm that.
Okay.
The item at the top of Page 3, Orange County Catholic Worker versus Orange County Case, the council discussed that case, some current exposure in that case, and an action filed by the city of Santa Ana but not yet served on the city. The council voted unanimously with a motion by Councilmember Schwartz, seconded by Councilmember Doncheck, to approve two agreements. The first was a joint defense agreement with the law firm of Jones Day, and the second one was a limited waiver of conflicts with our firm to allow limited participation to council in looking at that case and remediation that might be necessary or advisable thereunder. So that was it. I don't want to be in the movie again, but I just have to say, we did talk about the TCA lawsuit. In sharp contrast to the impression that was left earlier, the council sued the city, or excuse me, the county of Orange and other agencies to remove the 241 extension from the county's general plan. Coincidentally, the county has the fulfillment of that settlement on its agenda for this coming Tuesday. Item number 62 removes the 241 extension from OSO to Interstate 5 from the county's general plan, and the city brought litigation to make that happen. So if anyone wants that to go away, they should go to the Board of Supervisors meeting on Tuesday and urge that they support our settlement by removing the 241 freeway from anywhere in the general plan, but that we're studying it to put it back and extend it through the state park is completely absurd, given the record and given that item that's up for consideration on Tuesday, because it was the fulfillment of a lawsuit brought by the city that it's happening.
Okay.
Sorry to get amped up, but it frustrates me to have that impression left in this chamber.
Thank you for the clarity.
All items listed. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion unless council staff or the public request removal of an item for separate discussion and an action. I have not received any requests for removal.
I'd like to pull item 6J.
6J, Lori? Kathy?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Chris has nothing. I don't have anything.
Move the balance.
Motion by Doncheck, second by Ham, all those in favor. Aye. Passes 5-0. Item 6J, Steve?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring this up because we're talking about, in this, the legal fees that have been accumulating. And the two, the two things that I had on my bucket list when I was elected over a year ago was that, one, want to get a handle on all of our litigation, and, two, want to find a way to get more deputies out there on the streets to, you know, to help with us, especially now that we have such, so many issues coming up regarding transits and so on. And what I wanted to just kind of bring this to everyone's attention, because the numbers are showing us, that we're talking about here, $425,000 we're adding to for legal fees, and that's roughly the price of two deputies. So it's just, I want to just underline the fact that, you know, this council is taking all its efforts it can do to settle and resolve these, all these, a lot of them, I think, frivolous, but litigation issues, and so that we don't have to keep spending so much money, hard-earned money for the city, on our fighting lawsuits and able to then spend the money and save the money to spend it for our deputies and the public safety. So I just wanted to highlight out, I'll go ahead and move the item.
A motion by Schwartz, second by Ham, all those in favor. Aye. Passes 5-0.
Jim, I don't have any cards. I don't have any cards for this one. City manager?
Nothing to report.
City attorney?
No, thank you, nothing more.
House members?
Okay, start with Kathy? Anything?
Yeah, so Steve and I attended the Public Safety Task Force last week. It was our final meeting before the budget hearing, which is coming up this month. And it was our second meeting that was very well-attended. So Steve and I were very happy about that, that we had a lot of residents supporting us for our drive for increased public safety in the city of San Clemente. I think it went very well. People were very supportive. I would like to commend all the Public Safety Task Force members for their hard work and diligence through this process. It wasn't always easy, but we did achieve some direction that will be coming before us in the budget package. Eric, is that one that will be presented to the council?
Correct. So we'll be having our budget workshop and hearing starting at 4 o'clock on May 21st, right here in the council chambers. And at that time, we'll be presenting the proposed budget and having public input as well as council input.
Perfect. If nobody has any questions, we'll be expressing that in detail once we get to the budget hearing, so.
You know, I keep, we keep getting emails on that point, that residents aren't seeing anything yet. But we are going into the budget.
better what it takes to try to get something done so that we get it correct, done correctly, is that it, it's kind of like making sausage. There's an awful lot of stuff going in that's being pushed into these sacks before you end up coming up with a royal ordinance or whatever resolution that works. So this is sausage-making. It's been sausage-making for over a year now, and I'm hoping we're getting close to the barbecue time. That's all.
Yeah, before, before I get off the subject, I just want to point out that, you know, one of the biggest concerns we heard, Steve and I heard during the Public Safety Task Force, is that there was an opportunity for people to get involved and speak, and I just want to remind the public that the whole reason we had the Public Safety Task Force was to give people the outlet to come and speak. And so I feel that was a pretty successful outcome. We had, you know, multiple speakers, especially through the final meetings. It was slow to start, but after Steve fired up his Facebook page, people started showing up, and it got good. So anyway, thanks to everybody who came out and spoke in support or in opposition to what we were doing, but either way, I'm just glad people came out and spoke.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Steve, anything else?
No.
Lori?
So I'd like to just announce something. Tomorrow evening at the Bahai Faith Center here in San Clemente located at 3316 Del Presidente, we're going to be having a City Talk presentation, where I'm going to be presenting along with a member of city staff, and we'll be talking all about the city, different departments and functions of government. It should be a great introduction to what we do as a community, and we would like to invite, and he would like to come and attend. It is open to the public, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I think it'll be great. It's going to be seven o'clock tomorrow night at the Bahai Center at 3316 Avenida Del Presidente. So I think it'll be great.
Just to let you know, there's a thing at the senior center at the same time.
Same time, senior center, yeah. It's got, it's got a bit of a conflict, so you're going to have to, to...
And I'm committed to go there.
Yeah, well, you know, Chris, we'll, we'll muster up. We'll do okay.
As designated, senior citizen on.
That's it. Somebody's got to do it. All right, that's it for me. Oh, we do. We have, actually, we have an update regarding the Two Four, who's deployed right now to Australia. It's pretty cool, and it's actually a message from, a message from Lieutenant Colonel Cook and Sergeant Major Molina.
Yes, from our magnificent bastard families.
That's right.
Hey, folks, Lieutenant Colonel Cook here. I'm the guy on the left, Sergeant Major Molina's on the right, and the mayor of the village our base is in here in Darwin is in the middle. Want to give you a quick update on the major actions that have occurred since we arrived a couple weeks ago, and give you an idea of what's going to happen in the future, and address any kind of rumors that might be going around. So as you can see from those pictures and videos, we've been welcomed with open arms by our Australian allies, so we're really blessed. Shortly after Anzac Day, we had a contingent of Marines go down to the Melbourne area and participate in a shooting competition, international shooting competition, and the Marines are gang-tackling with the Marine Corps Shooting Team, actually, and doing quite well. So they're due to return in Darwin mid-May timeframe. The other thing that occurred this past week is Task Force Gulf, which is a contingent of Weapons Company Marines, H&amp;S Company Marines, and all of Gulf Company, deployed to Townsville, where they will be for the preponderance of the deployment. The Weapons Company Marines will come back about halfway through the summer, and the Gulf Company Marines will stay attached and integrated with the Aussies for the entirety of the deployment. One of those platoons will actually get on ship with the Australians and go towards Hawaii doing partnerships along the way. Additionally, we've got Task Force Fox that also deployed to the east, different place, Brisbane area, where they will be integrated with the Australians until late July, early August timeframe. With Fox and Gulf to the east, we have Mike Battery, we have Echo Company, and we have Whiskey Company up here in Darwin. The other thing I wanted to do is review over the next couple weeks. To date, the Marines have pretty much been around Darwin, getting acclimated and getting situated to their living conditions here, so their communications has been pretty good. But starting on Monday, the Marines and sailors are going to be in the field, so the communications with you are not going to be as great as they have been in the past. If you ever have a question, you can always get ahold of Mark Spurling via email, phone, or Facebook.
Good afternoon, bastionese and bastard families. Sergeant Major Molina here. You know, as the CEO already said, we touched down and everything's going well up to this point. Just a few things I want to highlight. When it comes to leave, okay, everyone's going to be afforded two weeks of leave. Now, H&amp;S and Weapons, probably the only two companies that it's going to be a little bit different, because they support all the other companies. So just ensure that you communicate with your Marines so they understand, and they let you know that they do have two weeks, and that we can plan accordingly if and when you're going to come out and visit them. When you talk about pay, a couple things that was brought to our attention is that paychecks are fluctuating. As we mentioned before we left in a couple of the town hall meetings, was that pay was going to be a little more or a little less, depending if you're married or if you're single. Now, for married personnel, you can see a little fluctuation, but given one pay, there were two periods for all those different entitlements to catch up and cut. At the end of the day, you're not going to see a big difference. Okay, communication? So communication around here is good and bad. Okay, good if, like, a lot of Marines went out and got this hot ticket out of right here, a Wi-Fi puck. So most of them, they want to be able to communicate with you on a regular basis, although they do get free Wi-Fi at certain spots. It's slow once everybody gets on it, so a lot of them went out and bought this little thing here. So bear with it, and again, as the CEO mentioned, was that when they go out to the field, that communication is going to minimize. Now, you shouldn't be able to see anything out from the field, because they're strictly going out to train. All in all, we're starting to get our feet underneath us and have a great deployment, and we continue to send these videos out to you so you can get most of today's information. Thank you.
That's tremendous. We appreciate Wayne Ecclestone for forwarding that to us and for allowing us to get a picture of how the Two Four's doing out there. Look like they're great. Yeah?
Do you want motions on the second readings?
Before we do that, I got one more item that this just reminded me of. So last week, I participated in the 76th anniversary of Camp Pendleton and the Second Annual Ceremonial Horseback Ride. That started at the Northern...
You did?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, with the General. It was a great time. So it started at the Northern Camp House. We did a loop around the Las Polgas Hills there, out through the El Horno Canyon, and then back down and finished along the beach. It was fantastic. And so I've been brought to extend an invitation to the rest of the council to ensure that everybody's invited and knows that they're invited, so we can get more people to attend next year. We had probably 50-plus horses. I forgot to send an email with photos. I do have some great photos that I'll probably bring up next time.
So what kind of horse were you riding?
I was riding a all-white female horse. That, second year in row, I've ridden her, third time I've ever ridden her, and we don't get along very well. So she bit the Trail Masters' horse in the face. That's the second year in row she's bitten another horse, which is fantastic, but it was still a great event nonetheless. So it was on that really hot, windy day that we had, and so the weather was perfect, and the wind kept all this dust out of each other's face.
Gee, I thought a fire would know how to rain in a mare.
Yeah, well, she, she's a very opinionated horse, so we have a history now. So I'm looking forward to next year when we're going to get along much better.
I would like to ride, but I don't want that horse.
Well, so there's a little bit of backstory. The reason I ended up with this horse was last year, the General was new to horseback riding, never done it before, and so I met him for his, one of his first training rides down the stables on the base, and it was myself, him, and his captain. And of the three of us, I was the one who had the most horseback riding experience, growing up riding horses, and so they put me with the most problematic horse. And then the stable manager decided that it'd be appropriate to continually give me that horse. So, real quick, I know Lori wants to get out of here, but the first stop, there's five stops. The first one, we stopped, and horses like to eat grass. You're not allowed to let them eat grass. I was trying to make amends. I said, hey, eat all the grass you want, right? Yeah, just, hey, we're going to work this out. You look great. I'm going to, I'm going to do everything I can to support your day today.
So you have to reason with the mare, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'm going to reason with her. So I let her eat grass for about 15 minutes. We go to takeoff, and the group takes off down this road, and they're, we're riding right into enemy fire. Literally, they're training, and we're riding right into fire. And she decides about 300 yards out, mm, no, I'm not, I'm not going this way. We're going to go back to where I came from.
Grass.
Because I'm done. Yeah, no, no, not the grass. She wants to go back to the starting point. So she rides back 300 yards. The, the trail ride continues on without me, and she goes back to the stable manager, who happens to be eight months pregnant. And the stable manager says, well, you just, you just need to start telling this horse who's boss. So I do, you know, all the normal things, tell the horse who's boss, and the horse decides, you know what? I'm going to put you on the ground. I'm done playing games with you. So it starts bucking me. Thankfully, two of the riders come back that are part of the Portola group this year, and one of the gentlemen breaks horses for a living. And so we swapped horses, and he broke that horse for the next 15 minutes, and then after that, it was all fresh and dandy until she bit the Trail Masters' horse in the face in front of everyone, which was pretty entertaining. So anyway, hopefully you guys can attend next year with me. It's a great event, and, you know, just fosters relationships with the base that we need to maintain, because they are the greatest neighbor to ourselves.
Yeah. No doubt. So we have second readings here, Scott. On the second readings for the STLU ordinances, do I step out for those?
Yeah, that, I think you should do that. Thanks, man.
Okay, so it's C, D, and F. So I'll read the first two. I move that we adopt ordinance number 1652 entitled, "Ornance of City Council, City of San Clemente, California Making Sequel Findings and For City Initiated Amendment, ZA 17-412 to the City San Clemente Municipal Code Title 17, Zoning. To achieve consistency between those documents, the adopted superintendent plan for Phase Two of the company has zoning code pursuant to Government Code Section 65860." I move that we adopt ordinance number 1653 entitled, "Ornance of City Council, City of San Clemente, California."
You need to vote on that.
5-0.
On the first one.
Oh, didn't, didn't we?
We did.
Yeah.
We did.
Yeah. Oh, motion by Brown, second by Hamm, all those in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. I move that we adopt ordinance number 1653 entitled, "Ornance of City Council, City of San Clemente, California Making Sequel Findings and For City Initiated Amendment, ZA 18-009090 of the City San Clemente Municipal Code Section 17.28.300 for Temporary Fencing." Motion by Brown, second by Ward, all those in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. I will recuse myself from this item due to previously stated issues regarding the STLU issue, because of my wife's work.
Let's do this. You want to read some, or am I going to read them?
I'll trade with them.
Okay. So we're on C?
Yeah.
Okay. Ordinance number 1654, South Starred Edition is introduced... What the heck? That's a weird way to write that. Why is there an if at the beginning of this one?
Well, it didn't know if you were going to approve it last week, but now it's just moved to...
So I move that we introduce it. Okay, let me see.
You're picking up where it says adopt. Motion to adopt.
Move that we adopt ordinance number 1654 entitled, "Ornance of City Council, City of San Clemente Approving an Amendment to Municipal Code Title 17 Regarding Regulation of Short-Term Lodging Units."
Second.
Motion by Hamm, second by Schwartz, all those in favor? Aye. Passes 401. I'll just do them, Steve.
Okay.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 1655 entitled, "Ornance of City Council, City of San Clemente, California Adding a New Chapter 1.22 to Title 1 of the San Clemente Municipal Code Relating to Fees for Administrative Hearings and Appeals and Amending Sections 1.20.080 and 1.20.090 of Chapter 1.20 of Title 1 of the Municipal Code Relating to Judicial Review of Administrative Citations."
Second.
Motion by Hamm, second by Schwartz, all those in favor? Aye. Passes 401. I move that we adopt...
Yeah, Tim could have voted on that one, but...
Okay, I move that we adopt ordinance number 1656 entitled, "Ornance of City Council, City of San Clemente, California Amending Municipal Code Chapters 1.20 Administrative Fines 3.24 for Transient Sacks in a Cross Reference to Chapter 8.28 and Subsection 17.28.292 E3 Solid Waste Management Regarding Regulation of Short-Term Lodging Units."
Second.
Motion by Hamm, second by Schwartz, all those in favor? Aye. Passes 401. And I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn to an adjourned regular meeting to be held May 21, 2018 at 4:00 p.m. in the council chambers located at Avenida Presidio, San Clemente, for the purpose of conducting a public hearing workshop concerning the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 city budget.
Before I second that, I'll...
You want to read the second?
And that we, a subsequent adjourned regular city council meeting will be held on June 12, 2018, in the council chambers. Closed session items will be considered at 5:00 p.m. and the regular business meeting at 6:00 p.m. This adjourned regular council meeting takes the place of regular council meeting that would normally be have held, held on June 5, 2018, but was previously rescheduled to enable the chambers to be used as a polling site for the June 5, 2018 primary election, and I hope everyone gets out to vote.
So I'll second that, and I'll notice that the mayor was not present for voting C, D, and E. He was recused.
Mayor, do you want to register an i-vote on item D, because you weren't disqualified on that one?
I will. I...
That's the administrative citations.